Let the record reflect, we reconvene with all members present. Please rise for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Apologize, a little brisk in here, but that'll keep our blood flowing. We have a motion for the executive minutes of November 9th, 2015.
I'll move him.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
I'm going to say any.
You're allowed to vote yes, though.
I wasn't there for the executive session.
The only reason you're not allowed to vote is if there's a substantial change to what was presented, so you're just...
Okay, then I vote yes.
We have a motion for the regular minutes of November 9th.
They're moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Welcome, everyone. Second-to-last meeting for the year as we make our push to the end of the year and the holidays. Just a few things to report on. Last week, I attended the League of Municipalities and some of the workshops I was able to attend included strengthening downtowns, very appropriate subject. The update dating of state liquor license laws. I also attended the annual joint insurance fund presentation that my attendance will give Madison $250 credit on our premium. But the best part of the conference was the Municipal Managers Association lunch recognized Ray Cody as the manager of the year, and so it was great to see him. Thank you for all you do on behalf of our residents. This past Saturday, we had the rededication ribbon cutting for the Hillcrest Triangle. For those that go down Woodland Road, there's that triangle right at the entrance of Hillcrest. Harry Pignataro of Cardinal Landscaping volunteered to redo the triangle, and it really came out beautifully. And if you, next time you're in that neighborhood, please stop by, a little place for them to sit, sit on, and nicely landscaped. Residents came by to join us for ribbon cutting and all were very appreciative of his work on behalf of Madison. And this is a busy time sports-wise. Congratulations to Madison Dodgers football team for their 14-7 victory of Lenape Valley so in the semifinals, so they're off to state finals, and we wish them best of luck. And also to our field hockey team, they did Madison proud. It was a heartbreaking overtime loss to Oaknall in the semifinals for the tournament champions, but as I said, did Madison very proud on her, on their be, on their play. This past Friday, had the opportunity to attend the United Way Public Officials Forum on Alice. If you have not heard the word Alice, it's asset limited, income constraint, employed. So those include our neighbors, people that serve us coffee, work full-time, and still can't make ends meet. And it was a very enlightening, enlightening panel, especially when you look at the fact that it was Senator Cory Booker sitting there with Governor Tom Kean, and to hear how people of different parties sat there and discussed and working together on difficult challenges. And there was probably far more agreement on how to solve it than disagreement. And I have a little bit longer report for the library, but I'm going to deliver most of this because we've been waiting for this news for quite a while. The main library is now open for business, and the Chase Room will reopen by the end of November. The library board will, the library will still have construction remodeling activity occurring, but this will not impede on their ability to be open for service. And while there's some changes to open hours to accommodate the activity, they're expecting it to be minor in nature. This HVAC project began October 5th and was expected last to, now to the 23rd. The original project plan anticipated the library being open for some services on a limited basis, but unforeseen construction issues occurred which made the interim use a challenge. Maintaining safety of the public and staff required full closure and was certainly a high priority. In addition to having a new HVAC system in place, which for most HVAC systems, you don't know that they're new, only, you only know when they don't work. So you may not notice the new system, except for it'll be far more efficient, but you also notice some other changes. The lobby, picture book room in the children's service department, you'll see the new lighting and ceiling in the lobby, new carpeting furnishings are to come. Their technical services department staff have a new refurbished home with a new layout and furnishings to be more efficient. In the coming months, the children's picture book room will be totally re-transform and reopened. And the funding of the HVAC project, as you know, came from funding through our borough capital funds of $650,000 and the library board of trustees funding the rest out of various funds for the refurbishing of the children's room and other parts of the project. So all the staff are anxious to get back and to serve the Madison residents. And just, you can go on the website to confirm hours, but right now, hours starting tomorrow, Tuesdays from 10:00 to 6:00, Wednesdays 10:00 to 4:00, Friday 10:00 to 6:00, Saturday 10:00 to 5:00, and Sundays 2:00 to 5:00. So it'd be great to be, see that back in operation. We've missed it. And my last is a happy Thanksgiving to all, and this is a great time to give thanks. And I want to thank the employees, the volunteers in our room right here with us at our table, the volunteers that serve Madison so well, all the people, all the residents, employees that make Madison such a great place. So happy Thanksgiving, and please give a toast to all those that give, gift to Madison on your Thanksgiving dinner. And on to reports from committees, community affairs. Ms. Bailey?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to report on the DDC. The holiday season in Madison begins this Friday, November 27th. The Madison Holiday Arts Festival, which is presented by the Madison Arts Cultural Alliance, begins at noon that day with free musical performances throughout the day. To see the schedule, go on to the MACHA website, which is www.madisonartsnj.org. The downtown Christmas walk is from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. on that day. You can enjoy cider cookies and old-fashioned hospitality, compliments of the businesses in town, the Christmas parade, and tree lighting begin, and parade begin at 5:30 p.m. Then on December 10th, there will be a menorah lighting at 6:00 p.m. in front of the Madison train station, and a reception will follow at Hartley Dodge Memorial. And the holiday gift checks are now available. Receive one free $10 gift check for every $100 purchased in Madison holiday gift checks, and you can redeem the gift checks for holiday shopping and giving at businesses throughout Madison. They are available for purchase from Friday, November 27th to Christmas Eve only at Kramer's Carpet One Floor Home, 73 Main Street, Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. DDC also did have a very lively discussion at their meeting about the stores that are unoccupied and what we can do to get them occupied. So the conversation is alive and starting. For the Madison Senior Center, Helen Corlett's Looking Back column in the senior newsletter continues to attract positive comments and is frequently the first place people look when they receive an issue. To date, she has researched and written 27 columns, ranging from prohibition to French immigrants to letters to Santa written by children in 1914. And then two new activities have been added at the senior center, a Thursday Bridge Group and a Tuesday Canasta Group. Both are the results of residents taking adult school classes and then having the opportunity to practice what they have learned, a strategy that began with last year's mahjong players. Three groups are currently on our schedule. And the telephone reassurance program has added a 12th volunteer, ensuring coverage and daily calls to 21 homebound seniors around Morris County. And then the Chamber of Commerce is asking the residents to support the Madison Eagle Christmas Fund. Toys are being, they're requesting toys, books, and gloves. Toy, if you are going to give a toy, you can give it to the Better Homes and Gardens, Cosia Realty, Madison Mud, Wykered Realtors, Cleaners Advantage, Providence Bank, Sugar Rush, Fulton Bank, Infestors Bank, PNC Bank, Connect One Bank. Just remember, banks, you can give toys to the banks. For the book drive, Short Stories and the Community, Community Book Hub will receive books. And for the glove collection, you can try Moment Institute, Adams Dental, and The Bar Method of Madison. All of these will help families here in Madison, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Public safety, Mr. Catalonello?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Madison Police Department is asking anyone with any information at all regarding the hit-and-run incident from last week on Main Street near the Burger King to please contact them. It was a very serious accident, and we hope to be able to, you know, do what we can to get responsible parties taking care of it. And our thoughts and prayers are with the victim who remains hospitalized. The Chief, Chief Lou has asked me to read some holiday safety tips. So here we go. On any given day, cooking fires account for about 48% of all reported fires, and that grows to 72% on Thanksgiving Day. With that in mind, here are some safety tips. Stay in the kitchen when cooking on the stove top. Stay at home when cooking your turkey, and please check it often. Keep kids three feet away from the stove. Keep the floor clear of trip hazards, and please keep children away from knives and lit candles. Since we're not meeting until the middle of December, he also has asked me to read some Christmas safety tips. And he reminds us that Christmas tree fires are not common, but when they do occur, they are very serious. The average is one fatality per 143 reported home structure fires. With Christmas tree fires, that number increases dramatically to one fatality for every 40 fires. And so here are some Christmas safety tips. Keep trees three feet away from heat sources. Make sure that the tree is not blocking an exit. Water the tree on a daily basis. Never use candles to decorate the tree. Only use lights that are labeled and approved for the use on Christmas trees. Please turn off the lights before you go to bed and replace light strings that are worn or frayed. One out of three Christmas tree fires are caused by electrical problems. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Utilities, Ms. Vitale?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. From the electric department, as many of you probably have seen, they cut it, they set it, and they decorated the Christmas tree downtown. And they installed all the Christmas wreaths, and they did a beautiful job. This is a beautiful Christmas tree this year. And they began pole transfers on Lorraine Road, they did normal service upgrades and removals, and lots of mark-out requests. The water department does basically about the same thing, but they did put in two new services on 134 Main Street and one on 118 Lewanica Way. Their water testing is ongoing every two weeks, and of course, we've had problems with well A, and they're making sure that that, that is going along in a, in a good fashion. I do want to talk about this evening about an important funding ordinance on the agenda for introduction tonight. The Borough Water and Electric Utilities will be implementing a pilot test program for automated meters. More advanced meters will be installed on our largest corporate electric customers so we can collect hourly data. This hourly consumption information will help us better plan and manage the electric utility. We will also be testing out communication caps that can place on, can be placed on existing water meters so the water reads can be read automatically. Finally, the pilot program also includes handheld devices, which we're very excited about. Donna Carey reported at the last council meeting that the meter readers will no longer be using pencil and paper and these ridiculous books that they've been using for years, and they will instead use these handheld devices to report the meter reads. As a reminder, the utility billing system is being upgraded next week as well. So the electric and water bills will be included on a single sheet of paper. In addition, a new online bill system will be implemented. So we thank Donna, and Jim, and Ray for working very hard on this. This is going to be something that's very, very nice. We've been working about consolidating all of the account numbers so that we can get them on a single sheet of paper. So, you know, we thank everybody that's done all of their work, so just in case there's a little glitch, we ask for your, your patience during the system implementation. I did, last week, I kind of forgot to talk about one of, I think, one of the most, one of the best things that has happened to us since we own our own utility and water utilities. But joint operations were not permitted under Uniform Shared Services and Consolidation Act. The bill, cosponsored by Assembly Milo Jacy, who represents Millburn, one of the towns with its own electric utility, both passed both the state senate and assembly unanimously earlier this year. And that was cosponsored with John McCain. I wanted to say especially, you know, a special thank, thank you to them because they worked very, very hard to make sure that, you know, individual households could see their energy bills decrease. And also, you know, it's going to be a big, a big boon for us, those, for us that own our own utilities, and that's Butler, Kenlon, Bloomingdale, and whatever. So special, special thanks to them. They work very hard. And to have something passed in the assembly and the senate unanimously is, is a, is a big thing for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance and Borough Clerk, Mr. Landrigan?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, we are working with the State Department of Environmental Protection to arrange the receipt of $500,000 of Green Acres grant money that the borough received earlier this month. We hope that the funds will be received later this week, or in a few weeks. The sale of Green Village Road School is scheduled to take place next Thursday, October, December 1st. The borough will receive $1 million from the Board of Education as part of that transaction. The tax sale, that's where homes are in distress, is scheduled for December 17th at 10:00 a.m. in the tax office. Only 11 properties remain on the list. The transition of CFO responsibilities from Robert Califford to Jim Burnett is continuing. This is Robert Califford's last meeting. His last day will be December 11th. I just want to take a moment to say something about Mr. Califford. In the last few years as finance liaison, I've had the opportunity to work with him. I find him to be an honest man, a very good man, a colleague, one who you felt that the budget was in good hands. And I personally will miss him. He always had the borough's best interests at heart. Robert, you'll be missed. Thank you, Mayor.
Health, Mr. Wolkowitz?
Thank you, Mayor. Have a few things, couple of reminders and a couple of brand-new. On the reminder list, we're having adult health screening on Friday, December 4th, beginning at 8:00 a.m. For those of you who don't do this with your doctor, you should definitely be going. You get a full checkup on blood analysis, blood pressure, information on cholesterol, diet, fitness, and prevention of osteoporosis. The analysis includes measurement of HDL and LDL cholesterol, the two important components, as well as a number of other things. It is required that you fast if you are going to go, and registration is also required. Registration's now open. Please call the health department, and when you do, you should have your physician's name, address, and telephone number. There's also a men's health screening coming up on December 7th. Again, this is under reminders, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Dr. Delino will be performing a number of tests on, on men who show up for particular types of cancer that are unique to men. On the new list are two things regarding your pets. One is free rabies shots, and that's not a small deal. On Saturday, December 5th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon, there'll be a clinic held in the foyer of the Madison Civic Center at 28 Walnut Street behind the Central Avenue School. So by all means, if you have a pet and it's time for their vaccination, this is a pretty easy way to get it done. You should also remember that Madison Borough Ordinance has required that both dogs and cats must be licensed annually. This requirement includes animals that do not go outside, although I expect you have a pretty good chance of getting away with it if you don't bother with those. But nevertheless, you should be doing it. License renewals are due between January 2nd and January 31st, and proof of current rabies immunity good through at least October 31st, 2016 must be presented to obtain a license. So you can affect, go to the clinic, get the inoculation done, and then show up for a license. And then one final note, in an effort to support the community, the Madison Health Department recently completed an emergency preparing its guide for retail food establishments, and that is available online at the RoseNet website. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Mr. Rowe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, on the DPW, they are completing the second round of leaf pickups, and they just want to let everyone know that bags are still available. They'll be collecting leaves through the month of December. From the engineering department, a lot of these are going to be final reports since we're pretty much wrapping up the year. Sinage and striping for Ridge Hill Avenue is complete, and we expect that project will be closed out below budget. The staff is working on the 2016 road improvement projects, including the recently surveyed streets of Kenny, West Lewanica Terrace, Crescent, Cross, and Cottage Place in anticipation of getting approvals from the council to go to bid in early spring. A state aid application for Prospect that was submitted, design work will be completed by a consulting engineer. From the sewer department, the 2014 and 2015 sewer lining work is now complete. All this work was done within contracted amounts. Additionally, several small sewer, small stormwater collection improvements and added inlets were completed by the DPW staff. The water, the survey of Well Lee is complete, and the concrete pad required for the generator is expected to be installed by the DPW staff later this month. The redevelopment work at Well Lee has continued on an emergency basis and will be complete and operational in December. I will skip over the library since you already gave that report. For parks, skating, the Skating Rink and Memorial Park has drainage improvements complete in accordance with a contract with Cannon Landscape, Inc. The regrading and natural turf replacement contract with Leo Hines for the soccer field has been initiated but will be completed with topsoil and seed applications in the early spring when growing conditions will be more suitable. And also from the parks, the Dodge Field Basketball Course were improved by a contract with Musco and Quality Electric. Sidewalks connecting the recreation complex with the high school are in progress with Diamond Construction, Inc. I believe we're also working on completing the lighting work there as well, Ray. And finally, the Complete Streets Committee has a meeting scheduled for next Wednesday, December 2nd at 8:00 a.m. The Complete Streets Policy Manual and the committee's work was recognized by the New Jersey Bicycle and Pedestrian Resource Center last month. Thank you.
Thank you. Any communications or petitions?
Yes, Mayor. Council received two communications, email today from Jerry Stevenson of Ardstill Drive regarding the proposed ordinance 55, 2015, and an email also received today from Joseph Hamilton of Overhill Drive regarding water utility rates.
Thank you. And now we're on to our first of two invitations for discussion. This one is limited to items that are on the agenda. Actual ordinances will have hearings, and so please hold comments on ordinances. So it's the agenda items and then any resolutions. If you were here to comment on the water rate rollback, I ask that you just hold a few minutes because we have put that number one, and we will also have the ordinance second reading and hearing at that point. So you won't have to wait, and we'll have better continuity with discussion with that setup. So if you want to comment on the other items on the agenda, which are the Madison-Chatham Joint Meeting Bylaws, the Health Department Strategic Plan Presentation, the Roberts Final Agenda Items, which include corrective action plan, cancellation of completed capital ordinances, cancellation of old outstanding checks, old grant receivables, and then we have an item on 2016 road reconstruction or any of the resolutions. If you wish to comment on any of those, please step forward, state your name, your address, the agenda item you are discussing, and please keep your comments to three minutes or less.
It's really not enough time. I'll keep it short, and I'll come back. So one question, Tom Harlanputis, 27 Palmroy Road. So I have a question, Mayor and Council, on a resolution on the first page, 313, 2015, the cancellation of completed capital improvement ordinances. Is there some, some money that wasn't used with these that were not completed, and how much money was that?
Do we have the total array? It should be in the ordinance.
Something, yes.
So this is, while we're trying to look that up, this is a routine that as you, we complete a project, we allocate the money, and if there's leftover, it returns to the capital fund. And if, if we don't have it, Robert, when it's your turn, can you, you'll, you'll have that number, so you'll cover that in your agenda.
So that money, that money gets put back into the budget for next year? Is it surplus? How does it, how does it get accounted for?
It goes back into the capital improvement fund.
Okay.
$84,000.
$84,000 is the total.
That's a little help for next year.
Yes.
So we can use a little less of the other surplus, maybe, or do a few more projects.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other people want to comment on items on the agenda? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we move on to our agenda discussions. As mentioned, our water rate rollback. Just a clarification on something that was recently shared, and I want to make sure that people understand the process of how the agenda is done. Obviously, as Mayor, I take my job very seriously, and I, I'm proud of the way I've run, run these meetings and making sure there's open public input and full discussion, and everyone has their chance. And so when someone questions that, I do take it personally, and I want to ask our attorney, who is always at our beck and call, to make sure that, since I'm not the expert in law, that he can guide us through these ways. So this is related to the, to the fact that the water rate rollback was on the, initially on a draft agenda, was on the executive session and the process with that.
So the, I was contacted by several council people, as well as Mr. Cody on behalf of the mayor, about whether or not this discussion item, which is, you're going to hear it again tonight, it was discussed last meeting in open public session, whether this is an agenda item that should be in closed session or a public session. I opine that it should be in public session. Based on my opinion, there was no discussion whatsoever in closed session regarding the water rate rollback. The general rule when you go into closed session are there are certain items. Attorney-client privilege discussions can be in closed session, matters involving personnel to protect the confidentiality of employees, contract negotiations, including collective bargaining, or if you're going to, for example, buy a piece of property and you want to discuss your strategic negotiation strategies, that can be cut in closed session, and other items dealing with like security. If you want to talk about security threats, et cetera, you can do that in closed session. Other than that, and I opine that this was a, a proposed water rate rollback should take place in open public session. The auditor should be present publicly so that the public could hear the auditor's recommendations to the governing body, and that's what occurred. And so we often have draft agendas, and when draft agendas come out, they draft them, they then come to me for a review, or somebody brings it to my attention that there's something on it. I make a decision, and this one, the decision was to have it in public, and that's where it occurred. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, and with that, we'll call our auditor back because I, we have invited the auditor back because, for one, we were at three council members absent last, or two weeks ago, plus obviously with the hearing and the, and now the public ready for the hearing, we wanted to have our auditor share the thoughts that were shared two weeks ago and any additional information. So thank, Valerie, thank you for coming back again.
I am Valerie Dolan. We are the auditors with Ms. Avatia for the Borough of Madison. We were asked to give our recommendation based on what we felt was the right thing regarding the possible rollback on the water rates. Based on two factors, we have come to the conclusion... Based on two factors, we have come to the conclusion that we felt that the water rate should be remained where it was. There were two factors that we looked into. One of them was the current capital budget that is approved by the council currently has approximately $1.5 million worth of capital projects between 2015 through 2020. The other piece is the automated reader, meter reading program that's currently set aside when the role, when the rate was increased in the first place, and that was currently as of December now, you have $1 million. We also felt that knowing we're working on automated readers in many of our municipalities, that cost is not a full coverage of the cost of the automated readers. We've seen those costs anywhere between $2 million to $3 million or greater, those costs. So we felt that you didn't have enough money yet in reserve to cover that. That being said, a reduction in the revenue would be approximately $240,000, $250,000. That would put you into possibly two scenarios that you need to look at. Currently, there was about $541,000 of fund balance in the water utility, 500 of which was sent over to your current operating budget to use to offset your tax rep, so that you would not have to raise taxes. The other piece is if you were to continue those projects as planned in the capital budget, you would be looking at going out to debt then for those two items. So the two things we felt were you'd be taking away and putting, shifting a burden to your taxpayers for the loss of the revenue on the operating budget, and you would be burdening by going into debt for any of those capital projects for which you have what we say about $1 million in reserve, and the capital budget has $1.5 million in it. So you're already starting $500,000 short. That being said, that water, $1 million is for the water meters. There's still, I'm sure, there's line work that needs to be done. There's always infrastructure work that needs to be done. So your needs are greater than what you have. So I just wanted to give those. And then the other, so that being said, I didn't know if anyone had questions for me, which is really why we came back, to kind of give the same presentation we've given.
So just for a process thing, what we'll do is, questions now related to the auditor's report. We will then would move to the opening of the hearing to listen to the public and then the full council discussion. So, Pat, you were, look like you.
Yeah, well, my first question is the, on the cost of the meter reading, one of the things that we were told is that once we get the project going, the project itself will generate additional revenue. It's estimated that by the time we're completed, it'll generate an additional half a million dollars a year. So depending on how rapidly we do it, I believe that the $1 million is actually more than sufficient to start and possibly even complete it, but definitely not, we're going to need to set aside another couple of million dollars. I think the project is essentially self-funding. I don't know if you looked at that at all.
We didn't look at it from that perspective. We looked at it from the perspective of other municipalities who have already gone out and gotten quotes for those items. The automated meter, yes. What it does is those meters definitely bring you into getting a better billing for your utilities, your usage. What they do is they read better. The meters generate in a different way so that you are able to get a better stream of what is being used on your revenue. So yes, the revenue dollars, but until those meters are in place, it's very difficult to assess how successful or how poorly your meters have been reading in the past to dictate what they are. So we always feel that to cover the cost, you're better off to have a full amount of the coverage.
So with $1 million, you have plenty of time to kind of get some, some experience under your belt before you have to really make a final decision.
Some experience, but some of the quotes that we've received for some of ours, where I kind of came up with my dollar amounts, is I was actually basing it on some older revenue numbers. One of our towns went out seven years ago, and they're approximately about the same size as Madison, and they got two, their cost was about $2.5 million.
Okay. How long did it take them to do the project?
The project took several, I mean, I don't, let's see if Dover finished, I'm not sure if they finished their project. So it does take a lengthy to implement.
And what was their experience in terms of generating?
Um, I don't, that is not my client. That was one of Dave's. I'll have to get you the information.
Okay.
And then I know Butler is in the process of getting quotes. They have not done theirs. Their water utility is larger than yours, and the quotes they've received are upwards of over $3 million. But they have not started the process yet. They're still in the process.
The other thing is that the water, this automated reading program, the $3 million is really a combination of water and electric, correct?
Yes.
So is there a reason why we're trying to completely fund that program out of the water utility, why we're not looking to the electric utility? And if you look there, I mean, at this year at a minimum, the last projection we had from this current year's budget is we should be seeing at least an additional half a million dollars in surplus coming out of electric utility in 2016 versus what we saw this year. And that was before, I think, we signed the most recent set of contracts, which should probably drive our costs down even further. So did you look at all about the amount of surplus that we should be expecting to get from the electric utility to help fund this project over the next five years?
Fund this project, we didn't look at it from that way because this was a water rate. We had this, this ordinance, we were looking at it from the ordinance that was adopted.
But you were looking at the total cost of meter reading for both entities?
For the meter reading, that's just an approximate cost.
Okay. And then, on the original memo you gave us, you actually listed a third item. Have you dropped that from your?
No, what was on, did I miss one of my points?
It says, "Unique tax base with the number of tax-exempt properties."
Yeah, you do have a unique tax base. Madison, unlike most municipalities, is you have a large number of exempt properties. You have colleges, and those properties do not pay taxes. So therefore, what you do, what they do pay is they do pay utilities. So any tax, any reduction that you would do on a utility side would shift the burden because currently you are anticipating $500,000 of the water utility fund balance to support your app, capital project, and you're also bringing in $4.5 million from your electric utility over to your operating budget. Those are offsetting any potential tax burden that your taxpayers are fortunate. By reducing those rates, you then take away that possible revenue stream back to your budget, which then could lead you to a potential tax increase and shift the burden from all paying members to just the members of the taxpayer.
Of the people who were considered nonprofits, the list we saw, other than Drew, it seems to me almost everything else really ends up being a Madison taxpayer. Because on the list of nonprofits, if you will, was a combination of the borough, the Board of Education, which already are being supported by taxpayers, and primarily churches, who are also being supported by members of the community. So other than Drew, was anybody else really that we're, we're looking to collect money from through the utility tax?
We just looked at it from the unique tax base. We didn't look into the individuals.
Thank you.
Any other que, Rob?
Thank you. Did your analysis take into account the incremental revenue that the borough will receive in the water utility from the upcoming sale of Green Village Road property?
No, we did not.
Okay. And that's substantial, right, Ray?
$1 million for debt.
But that's the million that's.
But I'm talking about for the hookups, sewer hookups, water hookups.
Yeah.
Pardon me?
Stormwater connection fees?
Yes.
I don't know if Valerie's aware of that. It should be about $950,000.
Right. So it's another $950,000 we could potentially use, right, to offset the cost of these meters?
Those are connection fees that are coming in?
Yeah.
Stormwater connections. Those are for connections. Those are to be used for connections.
Yeah, but it's all, there's, there will be incremental revenue aside from that. Yeah? I mean, is it all, please correct me if I don't understand. So the $950,000, will it all be spent on the connections, or will be, there will be some residual?
That'll be net to the borough for the, over time, all our taxpayers have spent millions of dollars to create a sewer system and a water distribution system. We're now allowing someone to connect to that system. So we charge a fee per unit to connect to our fee in recognition of the prior investment by our taxpayers.
Fair enough.
So net to the borough would be approximately $950,000.
So that money would potentially then be available for this purpose?
It would be available to the borough. I mean, the sewer charge would go into the current fund because we don't have sewer utility. The water would go to the water utility.
Right. Okay.
So a portion of the fee.
Right, okay. So just some more revenue that we didn't include in our analysis. I'm wondering, it seems like we left a lot of data out, and it, you know, if you had this data when you did your analysis, do you think you would have come to a different conclusion?
I don't believe we would have.
And why is that?
Because we still feel that there are capital needs, and one, you have one project, we're focusing right now on the meters and the one project, but there are other water projects that the water needs to have done. You do have an aging infrastructure.
Yes.
And so those items are, they're accounted for, but they're not all analysis. We have to make sure that you have enough money because you don't want to go out to debt for any projects that you might have coming forward. So those items, we don't like to in this, do any of our analysis work on potential numbers. We like to work on numbers that are concrete and in existence as, when we look at it.
So if, if the amount that will be short is $240,000 or $250,000 per annum?
Yeah, that's in the.
And we've been collecting for five years, shouldn't we have more than $1 million saved for this?
Set aside. You had in your budget each year, set aside a certain amount to generate to be at a million in five years.
So then what happened to the rest, the other $40,000 or $50,000 a year for five years?
That money was going over as part of the revenue that was being anticipated to offset your taxes in your general operating.
So that was part of?
That was part of the $500,000 that's being sent over.
So it was just further dependence on our utility surpluses?
But that is given the unique structure.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
I have a couple of questions. The connection fees that Rob was talking about, when would they occur, Ray?
Well, they're payable upon issuance of the building permit, which probably will happen, the closing in December, they potentially would break ground in 2016 at some point, but it would be on the triggering date for the ordinance. The ordinance is self-effectuating that unless we act by January 31st, the rates automatically roll back. So the rates would have rolled back by the 10% by the time we'd have the funds coming in from the sewer or water connection fees. So unlike most other public water utilities or Butler that we use as an example, which is under BPU, this governing body can set the rates at any time. So what we're saying is act now not to roll the rates back, defer the decision, and during the budget process, when we have a full picture on the utilities, the municipal budget, our surplus position, the borough governing body can set the rates at any time. So if you see fit to adjust the rates at that time, you preserve, you always have that right, you reserve the right to adjust the rates, as opposed to having it unilaterally happen now because we take no action. That's what we're recommending.
I have a few more. Pat mentioned emergency work on Well-E. That implies to me that the infrastructure is aging, and just so we make it clear here that this isn't a political discussion, because I want to make it clear, how long ago have these, how long has infrastructure been aging? Let's say, how many administrations have not addressed this aging infrastructure?
Well, it's less visible, so it gets less attention, and that's, that is a problem that you've surfaced. We have five wells. Well-E, the repair was anticipated, it cost $25,000 when they started the work. They realized it was a $65,000 issue, so we're concerned that the remaining four other wells may need a similar investment during the summer. I think I've talked to Councilwoman Vitale about this during the summer, when we were in a drought scenario and at the same time we were doing sewer lining, we were pumping at full capacity of the system. We basically had no more water to pump because of the consumption rate of our residents. And you ride by our two water towers and you perceive that, oh, we're in good shape because we have hundreds of thousands of gallons of water available if, if the wells run dry. The water supply that we have in storage is less than a one-day supply for our residents based on our current consumption pattern during the summer. If we had to do another water tower, which has been long planned and delayed, it's over $1 million and a half if we had the land to build it and we had a site that was acceptable to the neighborhood. So we have major infrastructure. The Strategic Planning Committee for the Utilities indicated that it's, there's a million and a half dollars of deferred investment into the water distribution system and that the catch-up would be, if we continue to spend that annually, we wouldn't catch up to the deferred spending until 2050. So where currently our rates are 54.6% lower than the other 38 towns in Morris County that have a water utility, and we're now saying, that's not enough. We want to roll the rates back another 10% to be 64% less than every other town, every other investor-owned utility, when we have this huge capital requirements coming, staring us in the face. It makes absolutely no sense to do in a vacuum. We're saying defer it, and then revisit this during the budget process and decide if that's the appropriate thing to do, and if it is, and there's four votes to do it, you can change the rate at any time.
Thank you, Ray. You got out of roll there, so, yeah. And just a, you know, we have been replacing water mains, and as witnessed over the weekend at Hoboken, you understand the importance of reinvesting. So Bobby can finish your questions, we'll go to Ben, and then over to Osprey.
I'll just finish up with one question back to the auditor. So when you said before that you prefer to do your audit and recommendations based on concrete rather than speculative money?
Speculative minded.
These are the type of situations you're talking about, where we have emergencies, where it's a known aging infrastructure, and you feel that it's better to make sure that we have the proper funds put aside to take care of these issues as opposed to speculating on money that might come in, and we may then run short and then have to go out to debt to shift it over to the taxpayer.
Correct. That's why we always operate in a concrete environment of things that we can answer and know exist.
Thank you. You got it.
Ben?
I would just like to point out some recent history which somehow is eluding us.
Actually, right now, just trying to keep it to questions to our auditor, and then we'll have.
In that case, I will wait until later.
Yep.
Thank you.
I will too.
Okay, so we'll.
I have one more question.
Yes.
So the hookup fees, are they speculative, Ray, or not?
No, they're set by ordinance, but the timing.
So they're not, they're not speculative?
Well, they're going to take a while to come in, but.
And we're, and we are currently transferring half a million dollars a year from the water utility surplus to fund our operating budget.
In 2015, we did, yes.
And that's, that's not speculative either?
No, that's what we did this year.
Thank you. If you can stay around in case any questions come up as the, so at this point, I would like to call up Ordinance 55-2015 for second reading and ask the clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Okay, Ordinance 55-2015, Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending Chapter 190 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Water to remove references to Ordinance 1-2011, Section 4.
I now open the hearing to the public. For anyone wishing to comment on this ordinance, please step up, state your name, your address, and try to keep your, and Mike, yeah, come on up, and Tom can line up behind you.
Mike Soriano, 230 Woodland Road. Apropos to a lot of comments, I've prepared a statement so I don't ramble. I understand the original rationale for one-half of the February 2011 water rate increase to sunset in January 2016. However, I believe that the budget guidelines developed subsequently as part of the strategic planning process now provides parameters for deciding on rate changes for either the electric or water utility. Rate setting for utilities should first take into consideration the needs of the utility, and second, up to certain limits, take into consideration the needs of the borough. Guideline 3B states that surplus should be transferred from any utility only to the extent that the utility's surplus remaining after transfer is considered sufficient for that utility's, A, working capital, B, capital expenditures, and C, need for a reasonable cushion for contingencies. The consultants' reports for both utilities have not yet been made public. So as of now, we don't know the capital needs for the utilities, and it is a high priority to assure the operational reliability of the utilities by making the necessary capital investments. Guideline 3A states that utility budgets should recognize that future municipal budgets will likely require utility transfers up to 22% of total municipal appropriations, 7% for operating shortfall, and 15% for capital, including debt service. This provides a suggested upper limit on how much utility surplus can be prudently transferred to the municipal budgets so that we don't overly rely in good times on the utilities. In summary, the guidelines provide that we assure that first, the capital needs of the utilities are met, and second, that there are limits on how much utility surplus is transferred to the borough. Finally, if after this, there is still sustainable surplus available, then rate cuts should be considered. I support amending Ordinance 1-211, and I look forward to seeing how the capital needs of the utilities impacts the surplus available to transfer to the municipal budget on a multi-year basis. So basically, what I'm saying is there are consultants' reports that are still forthcoming. We just don't know what we don't know at this point in time, and I think it's just prudent to wait till we have all the facts in front of us as to what's on our plate in terms of capital spending on a multi-year basis. And we do look at not overrelying on the surplus from these utilities, and then you can take a look at rate increases. Right now, you just don't have the information to make the decisions. Right now, you just don't have the information to make the decisions, and I'm actually looking forward to seeing how this budget scenario for 2016 works out because I think there's a lot of issues that are going to be hidden in those reports from the consultants. And every time I listen to something on utilities, I hear about a project that hasn't been included, has been left out, and I just think there's a lot of work that has to be done on what are the real capital needs for this aging infrastructure. And I too saw the videos on the Hoboken water main, so we don't want that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
It's, please. Yeah, for those that don't come here regularly, I always ask, no matter how much you like what you hear, please hold any applause or any negative reaction because some people might get insulted when they don't get the applause. So please just take it all in. Thank you.
So some good points came up, some very good points came up during all your discussions and during the presentation. I have a couple of questions, Mayor. So was this auditors, I don't know the name of the auditor's company, were they auditors five years ago when we did this study?
Yes.
Were they involved in it at all in the projections? Because they seem to have a handle now on approximate costs of what it would be here and what it is in other townships.
Um, yeah, we.
You weren't the mayor then either?
I wasn't the mayor. I was on the council, and as I mentioned at the last meeting, it was my idea to do the rollback because we were, if you had looked at the history of our water rate increase over 20 years, there was virtually no increases over time. And so we were faced with the capital issue plus the water meter and an uncertain future. And so to help move it along, it was the suggestion of the 10% rollback.
I guess we've all got so used to things increasing every year in our lives that we can't face the reality that sometimes we can actually live with something at the same price.
Right.
A bad thing for us to have, right, a lot of aspects of our lives. So if this auditor was involved back then, how could they make such a mistake with the guidance they gave you where they told you what you should save over five years so that you'd have enough money after the fifth year expired to go and do your project? What's your thinking there?
All I can say is I wouldn't call it a mistake. It's just the viewpoint of five years ago was.
The private world, that'd be a mistake.
Yeah.
A big mistake. So it's a mistake on somebody's part. I don't know. Maybe it was the council guiding them or the water utility supervisor. I don't really know who it was. But that, I was at the meeting when this discussion was going on and when you all voted to sunset it. And I have to say that I don't understand all the procedures, but I have a little grasp of how things work, and there was nothing said at that meeting that in five years the council could vote not to sunset the rates. And if that was made clear to the public, you probably would have had a lot more people standing up to at least discuss it, maybe not object because we understand what the intentions are, and the goal is to fix the infrastructure of the water system to get the new meters in. But you were on the council, and a few of you might have been there at the time. So this is what you communicated to the community, and you got the support of the community because we thought we had a five-year window. It's the same issue that we have with the electric rates, but that's not a discussion for today. So there is something to be considered when the council at the time expresses to the community what's going to happen after the fifth year, and then there's obviously a mistake in what the cost is. So how can they not know? How can we not know after five years what it costs for us to replace the meters? What has your water department been doing for five years? They haven't gone out and gotten estimates to know what it really costs us to replace all of our water meters? So for five years, the public entities that don't pay taxes like Drew, they continued to get a free ride for five years? We didn't even go and change their meters, or did we?
Just so people understand, and I'll have, after the hearing, I'll have Jim also answer some of the questions. Commercial, the high users have a different process where mandatory, they have a meter, they own their meter, they have to have it tested every three years, and if it fails the test, they have to replace it. So that would happen with the Drew University and other large users in the municipality.
It has happened already, so that we know that we're getting the right readings?
From the large, from the large users, correct.
Because I know that the borough had asked the Board of Ed to change their meter at their own expense, I believe.
Yes, again, the ordinance would call for any, if the Board of Ed falls in the high usage area, that they would be mandated to do the three-year test, test every three years and take action if the test fails.
Okay, so now the money that we did make, the million dollars that's sitting there in surplus, we haven't spent.
It's been.
Plus it's a water utility.
And it's actually was, as the ordinance required, it is in a dedicated fund. Can't be spent on anything.
Right.
Except for meters without action.
Well, hopefully, the council and finance chair might want to sit down again with the auditors and discuss some of the points that came up about some additional money and revenue that the borough might be getting from the new construction over there. And I'm sure we got a lot of money when we also let the reology facility go and do their big renovation over the last five years. So that gentleman that just spoke said that, you know, we were supposed to keep enough money in our water utility to fund what the water utility needs. We shouldn't even have been taking some of the money out for tax reduction. We should have been keeping as much money in there for five years so that now if there was an opportunity to actually lower the rates, maybe give the residents an opportunity to save some money. I know the borough wants to save, but we probably want to give the residents the same opportunity. If possible, there's only so many times you cannot flush the toilet in a day or so many times that you can skip a day taking a shower. There's a lot of people that just need the basic services, and it might be cheaper than other towns, but we don't live in those other towns.
Thank you, and we got to give everyone their time, so. Yeah, I gave you, I gave you five probably, so.
But this discussion.
My meter was running, my meter was running slow.
It was for five years. We probably need more than five minutes to talk about it.
So I'm, so I'm new, so I apologize for clapping.
That's a quick.
I'll write my name here, and what I wanted to do is to make a statement and.
You actually, one more, your name and address.
Oh, my name is Ron Hendrickson, and I live at 119 Green Avenue here in Madison. And what I want to do is to make a statement that I'm a bit concerned upon about Madison's dependence on the utility surplus. And I'd like to just read something that I wrote in the newspaper and then advocate a position that perhaps that the city council can consider. I received the Madison Borough 215 budget summary, and I wrote this a month ago for the Eagle. In the mail the other week, did you happen to read through it carefully? I hear the Borough Council is doing so well with Madison finances, but what I read in the 215 budget summary caused me to question that claim, and here's why. Over 52% of the borough is now funded from non-tax revenue. I might ask the question, how can that be? How can Madison Borough generate revenue? It's through the artificially high utility rates that are passed by the borough, and they have remained unchanged. Now, I was pleased to see that the water rates were going to sunset, but I'm hearing discussion that perhaps they won't. For example, the electricity rates haven't changed Ordinance 75-210 since March of 2010. In other words, Madison residents don't pay market rate for electricity. They pay a rate established by the mayor and the Borough Council. This is important and expensive. Our neighbors, Chatham, for example, pays rate, market rates, which is about 14 cents per electricity. It's actually lower. I think it's about 11% now because energy prices are just plummeting. But we, however, pay the borough-established rate of 21 cents for the same unit of electricity. So either after paying for all the costs associated with distributing this, the equipment, the supplies, the benefits, the salaries, and personally, I think they do a fabulous job. We have wonderful people who serve this community. Madison made a $5 million profit for overcharging those rates in one year alone, $5 million profit. So keep in mind, it's against the law for any Madison resident, for example, me, to go as third-party supplier. Only 10 municipalities in the state of New Jersey are allowed to be the exclusive distributor of electricity. Madison is one of them. With that right comes responsibility. Now, keep in mind, the former mayor or the former governor of the state opted out of this for Drew University. The high electricity rates are simply a tax. So I invite my friends to come join me to talk to the council, to talk about these utility rates and what they plan to do about that. I like Madison. In fact, I'm raising four children here. One's already in college, and I'm looking forward to sending three more to college in the future. Energy rates have plummeted, utility prices are dropping, we're being taxed directly, we're being taxed indirectly and excessively, and what I'd advocate to the council is that we sunset this water rate and we consider how we plan for the long-term stability of our borough. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please step forward. Thank you, Woody.
And congratulations again to Ray Cody. I'm not supposed to say that right now. That's at the end of the meeting, I'm supposed to say that.
We let those things through. Well, we do require you still have to state your name and your address, though.
Woody Kirkus Lager, 60 Prospect Street. I think the arguments that have been made, both pro and con, tonight have been persuasive, I don't want to try to add to those in particular. I have one or two things that I do want to put into the discussion that haven't been brought up, but pretty much I agree with the auditor. I would be very interested in seeing the reports that were done. I'm really surprised that we don't have a five- or 10-year plan for both of the utilities. Is that a true statement?
We do have.
Preliminary. Preliminary. You have a preliminary, five or 10? So you should then know the maintenance cost for a five- or 10-year horizon.
We've, to get a better feel for the five-, 10-year plan to see whether it's valid, we have enlisted consultants to review the.
Okay, so you have the plans, and now you're.
Yep.
Fine-tooth comb. One of the things I wanted to say in the theme of sustainable Madison, and Madison has been acknowledged for its sustainability, the water issue is a significant element of that, of that honor. And it's not a minor thing. I'd just ask any town that has water problems whether or not water is a critical issue in the, in the health of the society in that town. So this is not just an issue of dollars and cents and who's paying and what. If you can't get water, you don't really have a town. The utility, at least the water utility, we talk about, and we don't see most of it. It's underground, but at least you've addressed that utility. What you have not addressed is the fact of where that water comes from. It comes from the aquifer. It's a shared resource. It's not our aquifer, and so we have to work with the other towns in terms of how much we use. One of the logics that flows from that is we do not want to overuse water because we're in this together with the other towns. Other towns have caps on how much water they can draw, and they bump up against those caps. I don't believe in general we bump up against those caps, but some other towns do. If we start drawing more or they start drawing more, we could all be in trouble. Where I'm heading is that's not a free resource. We don't pay money for it directly, but indirectly, we have paid millions of dollars for that resource, capital dollars, when we do things like the Luke Miller property, where we bought property and separated it and created more parkland with the intent of getting more recharge of the aquifer. When we bought a 53-acre property, a large chunk of that was intended to help recharging the aquifer. When we did the Livesey property, all of those costs are partially water costs, and there's justification for us to be considering, how do we fund that or how do we support that? We actually still have outstanding debt we're paying for that one, maybe we have more than one. It's the only one I'm aware of, that we have still outstanding debt to pay for the 53-acre project, and it's, and it's not paid yet. So we could justify in some way funding the repayment of that debt through the water surplus. The kinds of things we should be thinking of, but the basic issues are the ones I said upfront. I think you're looked at the right way. You covered the right issues. I want to see the reports at the end. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Do you want me to move it? Okay. Mayor, I'll move Ordinance 55-2015.
Mr. Mayor, I will second that motion.
And council discussion.
I've been quiet for a very long time, which is unusual, but I was waiting for the discussion to be held. I've listened a lot to what was going on, and there were points that I think I should reiterate. Paid a lot of attention this year to the utilities as liaison, and there were a lot of things that concerned me, one of which is that all of us have talked about is the aging of the infrastructure, which is probably, some of it is 100 years old. We don't know what's going on underneath the ground, and unfortunately, every once in a while, we find out because something burst or there's a major problem, so we have to rectify that. I'm concerned about the wells. This well that was working just fine, all of a sudden, is not in working order. We did, I think, well D, was it? Well D, a few years back, that's over near Lucy, the old Lucy D field. But we have B C. D, yeah. I'm concerned about that. I want to hear from a consultant, and it's one thing that I brought up at our last meeting was, I want somebody to go in and take a look at those wells. That costs money to do that. Those are very, very important items. One of, the other thing that's, that I have suggested to the Utility Advisory Committee is with the summer, we were pumping, as Ray said, 3 million to 3.5 million gallons of water per day, and that's a lot of pumping, and it was depleting our two water towers. So probably about 10 or 15 years, they've talked about locating another water tower someplace. And I did ask the Utility Advisory Committee next year to kind of study, go back and take a look at all of those studies on it and think about whether or not we need another tower. You know, one of my famous sayings is, you know, you could light a candle when there's no electricity, but when there's no water, it's, it really is devastating. It's devastating to the world, and it'll be devastating to this town, and we have to take care of it. How do we do that? Well, we take care of the aging infrastructure that we were lucky to have. Thank, you know, thankfully to our forefathers, they decided that they wanted to have these utilities, and they made some very good decisions. So I agree with you, Woody. You know, we have two good consultants going out there. We have one that's doing a very good look at our water department and whatever. We've had big transitions there this past year, so we need an opportunity to find out exactly what we need and how we go forward. We're lucky that, you know, I spoke about the resolution that is on today for the handhelds that are going to be reading. We're very lucky because our Neptune water meters just, you know, are compatible, you know, to those, so, you know, we have a little heads up with that. So there's a lot to be. So there's a lot to be considered here. I certainly, you know, remember, when this ordinance came into effect, things change in five years. And we've changed dramatically in five years. We need to just go ahead, as far as I'm concerned. So I certainly will support the removal of this-- the references in this particular ordinance tonight, only because I've seen what is happening with the utilities and how important it is for us to protect all of them. Thank you.
Ben?
Thank you, Mayor. This discussion reminds me of the discussions we had when I first joined the council. And at that time, we were framing a budget. And when I'd ask people, "How much surplus do we have, and how much do we take out of the electric utility, and what are the right numbers?", no one could give me an answer. It was basically a Goldilocks exercise. And one person's feeling of what was right sometimes differed with another person's feeling. So instead of dealing with numbers, which is where you should be when you talk about budgets, in my opinion, we talked about opinions. And I found it very frustrating. So I tried to turn what, to me, was a negative into a positive, and I launched a strategic planning exercise. As a consequence of that, and as a result, we now have guidelines, which Mike Soriano told you about more articulately than I can at this moment. And those guidelines answer questions such as, how much municipal surplus should we be using? Now, when we tried to do the same exercise with the utilities, as I think my colleagues know, we were shocked, somewhere between surprised and shocked, depending on how you went into the discussion, to find that independent group of citizens of our town, who very carefully assessed the capital needs of our utilities, came up with numbers that were far larger than what, in fact, had been allocated over the last several years. So it begs the question, who's right? And the concern was that if we're under-investing in capital, then indeed, we'll start to look like Hoboken, or God knows where. And that was hardly an objective that anyone had in mind. We couldn't resolve it by saying, "Explain to me how you think it's 1.5 million a year, and you who run this thing spend $400,000 a year. You guys have to work it out." That would not be a good exercise. So instead, we did what I thought was a good objective thing. We hired outside consultants who have expertise in the running of such utilities. And unfortunately, they're taking a hell of a long time. I would have hoped that by now, we would have had this material and these answers, but we do not. So when we do have them, the exercise should be a repeat of the exercise we've done before, i.e., we should calculate how much we think should be held in reserve by the utilities in order to have the necessary contingency funds. We need to worry about the timing of outlays and how that affects how much money they have to keep in reserve. And we need to know how much they should allocate to capital. At that point, I'd be willing to talk about a rate increase or decrease. Unfortunately, we're dealing with a time constraint. So as I said at the last meeting, and will repeat again, I would be more comfortable with an ordinance-- and I don't know if you have to put this in the ordinance-- that says that after those calculations are made, and by the way, after some of the appropriations we're going to be putting in our long-term budget are sharpened up a little more, that we would, at that point, be in a position to decide what to do. And if, in fact, we were beyond the stage where we could change-- where a change would already have-- I'm doing this very badly. Suppose we get into a situation where the numbers change on January 31st, and we don't have our calculations done until May, just for argument's sake. Then what I would be in favor of doing is retroactively rebetting the difference. So that if rates should have gone down, if we'd had these numbers sooner, let them go down. And let them go down retroactively because people have been overpaying. Alternatively, if the calculation goes the other way-- I'm not suggesting that we go pick people's pockets and ask for more money-- I would be inclined to just say, "Let it ride, and over time, we'll work it out." Now, I just want to say one other thing, because the same comments come up often. Are these utility surpluses a substitute for taxes? They are. And I see absolutely nothing wrong with that. When we did our budget studies, we discovered that the average community in Morris County allocated 64% of its expenses to be paid by property taxes. In other words, they looked at their budget, they said, "This is how much we need," and they went to their property taxes and covered 64% of that nut. In Madison, we cover 47%, but we have great services. We always talk about what great services we have, so how can that be? Well, how can that be? We have the luxury and the wonderful-- you know, if you want to thank anyone, thank the people who made these decisions many years ago. We have the wonderful ability to take whatever we earn out of the surplus and use it instead of taxes. Now, we can have a long argument about whether we should raise taxes and decrease utilities, and I know that there are people who say you should because you can't deduct utility fees from your taxes, but you can deduct your property tax from your taxes. This is all well and good. But the very same committee that examined the electric utilities concluded-- and they did it in a positive way, so I'm turning their positive into what I think is a negative-- what they concluded was that the only people who would be affected in a positive way by that transfer would be those people at the very top of the marginal tax rate schedule, i.e., the wealthier residents in this town. I, for one, don't worry about them. Now, I don't know if the rest of the council agrees with me, but I think, you know, that's a group that, whether it's 2% one way or the other, they're going to be okay tomorrow. The other thing that had to be done in this exercise to make it work was that no corporate, private business, non-residential user, however you want to phrase it, of electric utilities would enjoy a decrease. Because if you let them participate in the same way you want residents to participate in a decrease in your rates, guess what? It doesn't work. And the reason it doesn't work is because a disproportionate amount of the electricity revenue is generated by the top 50 users. They disproportionately overwhelm the residents. So if you want to go back and say, "Well, you know, I don't..." This'll work. The only thing you have to do is tell everyone in downtown that they can't participate. We just had a discussion about downtown, and there's a bit of concern about what it'll take to rejuvenate it a bit more. We all know there's empty storefronts, and nobody likes that. I don't think what'll help is to go around and tell people, "Yes, you heard right. We did decrease rates, but you guys are unaffected. Don't worry about it." I don't see that. So where I am is, I'm waiting on the consultants. I want to do this objectively. I would ask that in the interim, we take a pencil to some of those numbers we've been kicking around for, say, meter transfers, et cetera, have better numbers, know what it's going to look like over time, and then we can tell you. Can we decrease rates? And I, for one, hope the answer's yes. But I'm not doing it by opinion. I'm going to do it with the numbers.
Pat?
Sorry to take so much time.
I mean, I agree with Ben. If it turns out that we need to raise the rates because we need the money to cover the infrastructure costs for the utilities, then that's what I think we should do. But I think, for the time being, we don't have the numbers. And I think we promised the people five years ago that the rates would reset once we covered the costs of $1 million worth of meters. We've done that. Right now, that money is not being used to cover any other capital need. It's not being used to cover any other transfer need. And so if we need to come back in six months and raise them, that's what we do. But coming back in six months and saying, "We're going to give you some sort of rebate because we've decided they've gone down," seems to me kind of backwards. I do agree that subbing some of the surplus for taxes is fair, but only up to a point. And that point was actually identified by the Budget Committee. I think they put a number of 22% of the operating budget should be covered. Well, we're well above that right now. And based on the preliminary numbers that I've seen, we are not looking to target putting a lot of this $240,000 into infrastructure for the utilities. It seems to me more like it's just going to be available for additional transfer. We're going to see additional money coming out of the electric utility this year. So the last time I looked at the numbers, that percent was actually becoming less favorable. So I think, in many respects, we're becoming less-- I'm sorry, more dependent on the utilities, and allowing this rate reduction not to sunset will just increase that. So, you know, my personal feeling is, right now, we should just let that rate sunset and come back next year, once we really know what the budget looks like. Yes, we'll miss several months, possibly, of money, but it's not going to be a whole lot of money. And I suspect that if we need a lot more, even that amount isn't going to make enough. But I think we need to really right-size, both in the electric utility and the water utility, what we need and what we should be generating internally. Because right now, most of the surplus that we're generating is not being used for infrastructure needs. It's being used to cover taxes. And I think this is just going to exacerbate that. So I will be voting no on this particular issue.
Rob, and then Ostry.
Ostry, would you like to go first?
No, you go first.
Okay. So, again, I think that my main concern is that we have a structural issue in the way that we fund ourselves. If I'm not mistaken, we collect-- with the third-- in the entire county of Morris, we are the-- we have the third lowest collection of revenue via tax. And the only two that are less than us are Liberty Gardens and Wharton, and they really aren't even comparable in scope or in size. So essentially, we collect the fewest amount of dollars to run our borough, our municipality in the entire county. Right now, the money that we are collecting that is scheduled to be sunset through this water utility isn't going for infrastructure, per se. It's not going to fix the pipes or, you know, fix the wells. It's being put aside. And again, you know-- but we are transferring half a million dollars a year from the water utility to fund the municipality. Plus, how many millions would we transfer on the electric utility? Six, seven?
Four and a half.
Four and a half? And next year, it's going to be-- well, roughly, what's in the budget brief? Do you have-- Okay, fair enough. So--
It's going to be--
Right. So, you know, we're transferring an awful lot of money from the utilities. And my main concern is that, one day-- and it might not be for 20 years-- you know, we're not going to enjoy these surpluses anymore, and we're going to fall into the trap of, we're going to be funding fixed costs with variable revenue. And that's never a good situation. And I don't want to increase our dependence on this, you know, uncertain revenue stream. Now, if we're worried about the non-taxable users getting a free ride, there are other ways to handle that. And, you know, I know that other municipalities in the state, and ones that I'm associated with, like Villanova, for example, have opened dialogues with the townships where they reside as it pertains to, you know, fees for safety, you know, fees for fire, police, et cetera. And that's an upfront sort of payment. And, you know, I would much rather prefer to take that sort of a negotiating tack with our partners, you know, our non-taxpaying partners, than kind of trying to raise revenue on them by inflating utility rates, which, in turn, affect our taxpaying residents, too. So we're talking about, you know, this hole that technically doesn't exist because the money's been put into escrow for meters. The scope of the project has grown to include electric utility-- electric meters as well, and there's plenty of surplus there to help fund that. Everyone agrees that we're going to get a better read on actual water usage when we start putting the meters in. So I think it'll kick off revenue on its own, you know. And I-- look, I would agree with what Ben said. You know, if it turns out that we're not making enough, and we have to raise rates, then we have to raise rates. But, you know, I was on council when this was passed five years ago, and, you know, I'm not going to support this because I think it should sunset. I don't think we should make a bad situation worse by increasing our dependence on variable You know, and our residents, you know, we can, on the one hand, say, "Oh, we pay so much little-- we pay so little for electricity," I mean, for water, and not address the high electricity rates. It's just not fair. We have to look at them both in unison, you know. And we need to address the structural issue that we have, you know, that puts us last in the county in terms of raising revenue through taxes. So-- sorry if I took so long.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I'm definitely going to be shorter, because I can agree with comments made by several people here tonight. But first of all, government doesn't work smoothly, but eventually, it seems to come together, and we try to do the good thing. So 2011, it was the sense of the council to obviously put aside this money because they thought meters would be a more efficient way to go. As we progressed from 2011, we put together a strategic plan, and we have these guidelines that Mike Soriano referred to. And it just seems to me that we need to take all the information we've got now, keep our water rates right where they are, progress into a discussion that includes your elements, your elements, and Ben's elements, and with the piece that's missing, that the consultants' reports that will help adjust what our five- and 10-year plans are for the utilities, have that discussion. And if, at that time, that discussion says, "Yeah, you're right. We can decrease utility rates, and we shouldn't be so dependent on the money that we generate from utilities," then that's the time to adjust them. But I don't think adjusting tonight, this one, is a good idea until we put the whole together. That's it. Thanks.
Bob, did you--
Since you didn't have a chance, I just want to make sure-- Yeah, okay. I'll go back to what I said before. I don't like to speculate, and because I don't like to be participating revisionist history, when I talk about speculating about the connection fees, it's not so much I don't-- I know they're going to happen. It's just that I don't like to spend money before I have it. I've always been a strong believer in you save your money, you budget for what you need to do, you prepare for emergencies, OEM. And then, once all those needs are taken care of, then you can take care of your wants. I know, over the last few years, we've seen a parade of residents come in here wanting their roads repaired. We've got to pay for it somehow. You know, you could tax the hell out of people, but then you have a lot of people leaving town because, guess what? They can't afford the property taxes. And I've used this example before. I have a very close friend of mine that lives in, quote-unquote, "the hill section." And when she heard that her property taxes may be going up X percent, she said, "I can't afford to live here anymore, but I can choose to shut off my air conditioning, lower my air conditioning, shut my lights off." You know, and I did read your article in the paper. It was right during the campaign, and I thought it was very well-written. But then I said to myself, "Yeah, we do pay more, but what's that money going for?" And I do remember, like I said before, the parade of residents coming in. "I want my street done. It's not safe. The kids trip and fall. I can't, you know, do certain things out in the street. It's not safe. The wells are leaking." You know, we have to take care of the needs first before the wants. You know, I think of the work that Mike Soriano put in with that Strategic Planning Committee, all the work that's been done by those committees. And these are bipartisan committees that took a long, hard look at how we do things in Madison. And they came up with some very good rules. You know, I didn't like them all. A lot of it was some nasty medicine I had to swallow, but they were right. And they kind of follow along the way I think. You don't do things, you don't do your wants before your needs and what this town needs. And it was neglected for a long time. And I'm not saying it was done out of, you know, ignorance by the part of the council. I remember back in 2008, and for a while there, the economy was in pretty bad shape. So a lot of the work was postponed. We're playing catch-up now. And when you play catch-up, you have to sometimes bite the bullet a bit. And when you play catch-up, you have to sometimes bite the bullet a bit. And, you know, we are biting the bullet a little bit right now. And I applaud this council, every member of this council, for recognizing the work that needs to be done on the infrastructure, willing to do what's needed to be done, and make the hard decision. And right now, the hard decision, I'll just talk to the water rate issue, is this: we're paying less for water than most municipalities. We're not saying to raise them, we're just saying, keep them flat. And like Ben said, down the road, once we have everything identified, and Mike put it perfectly, once everything's identified, then you move forward. So, I'll, I'm good with the way this resolution's going to be written, and at some point, maybe we can lower the rates. I mean, hell, I use a lot of water, I got kids living at home, they do a lot of laundry, I'm paying money. But, you know, you can't have everything, you can't have your cake and eat it, too. Thank you, Mayor.
I'd like to get this moved to a vote after my comments, but Ben, if you have.
Yeah, I, just two things very briefly. One is that I share the concern that the electric utility surplus is a variable, and we are using it to fund some fixed costs. And when we, we did that disproportionately several years ago, in a time when the cost of electricity spiked, we suffered for it. So, I share that, and so, by the way, does the budget, the strategic planning committee on the budget, which said that utility transfers should be no more than 22% of total appropriations, I believe 22% is the right number. And we also looked at the proportion of total appropriations paid for by taxes, and we had an objective that it should cross 50%. These are not guidelines that we intend to ignore as we go through the budget process. They will be governing guidelines. And I don't believe it's going to be six months, I only threw out six months, because I wanted to make the point that if we had to go retroactively, you know, there might be some meaningful amount of money sitting on the table that, in fact, should be sitting at people's households. So, I just want to end with that. It sounds to me like we're all in the same place, the arguments are, do we, do we, do we basically not go for the reduction now, and recognize that we may have a reduction in the near future, may? Or do we reduce it now, but in the very near future, we may have to go right back and increase it? And, you know, that's a judgment call. I don't, I don't have numbers that guide me there, it's a judgment call. Thank you.
Some quick comments before we move on to the vote.
Mr. Mayor, can I make one point?
Yes.
I just looked at the budget. We transferred $6.7 million from the utilities this year into the borough budget, half a million from the water surplus, 2. almost 9 million for capital from the electric surplus, 1.1 from the surplus for operating, and then another 2.25 for debt service, which I think we're also calling capital. So, it's not four, it's quite a bit more.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
The 2.25 for debt services is an allocation of the monies. If you're talking about the surplus that gets put in, the first two numbers you have were correct. But, that's not the same as saying, you can't count paying for debt services as a surplus item.
Why? It's coming from the surplus, and it's not being.
You don't know that. You don't know that.
Okay, let's, let's.
It's coming from the electric utility.
Don't know that.
It's not.
Yeah, just so, so we can get to a vote, and as mayor, you're sometimes in the innuendo position of, I don't have to vote, so I could sit here quietly and not comment on this. But, I won't sit here quietly, and I'll actually contradict what just about everyone says, and how I would vote if I had the opportunity. I can only imagine, if someone from California clicked on Rosnet a couple weeks from now, and viewed this discussion of lowering water rates, talking about something that we assume just because we get out of the ground and don't pay for it, that it's a commodity without a charge, that it's free. It is far from that. It is so valuable that we must protect it. Former Mayor Kirkus Hager made a very good point. We are pulling from the same aquifer as neighboring communities. Can you imagine the conversation of, in those communities? You mean Madison is draining our resource at a lower rate than someone else? That just doesn't settle in for me. So, the conversation of even talking about lowering rates at the future date, if I were a voting member, I would vote no on that. We need to promote conservation. If our concern is the basic user, you know, I looked at, and this is an extreme bill, of, because I own a two-family home, and I had a single user in the apartment, $30 a quarter, and obviously, and that is extreme. But if we want to take, he's a basic water user. If our concern is affordability for our basic users, we should start looking at the rate structure, so that the basic users, the ones for showering, so we don't skip a day showering, for cooking, for running the toilets, washing our hands, we can look at that rate structure. But for those that want to water our lawn and do other things with it, then we need to change it. Let's not sit back and talk about this water commodity as if we can just pull it out and charge whatever we want. We have a responsibility to do it. And yes, it may generate a greater surplus. And yes, we need to look at our electric rates, and we need to do it soon. I don't want to have this conversation again before air conditioners get caught, turn on next summer, that we haven't reviewed electric rates. So, let's make sure we do it. These are two things that don't get combined, it's two separate issues. We need to take this water seriously, because there may be a council here, sitting here years from now, that says, oh, my God, if we had only known the aquifer was being drained out so fast, we would have taken different action. And, all for vote?
Mr. Cattell Nello?
No.
Phil Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
No.
Mayor, can I just make a comment?
No.
No, it's not about this, it's about the next, I was going to say.
I have to read, I have to read my statement.
Oh, okay.
First, sorry. Then you can, we're out of order with the.
It's not about water, I'm tired of water.
Yep. So, I declare ordinance 55, 2015, adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper, and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And now, on the next agenda item, you're.
Yeah, what I was going to say is, these poor people have been sitting here, they all have to go to work tomorrow, okay? Why don't we just let the health department move ahead? You know, the bylaws, I mean, the bylaws, we've been doing those for six months anyway, so, you know, that's just, I mean, I wrote the agenda rec to bring, you know, the bylaws here, but.
I'm fine with that. One other question for the council is just the, this discussion of water. Can we take a, just a two, three-minute bathroom break?
All that conversation.
All right, we'll be right back.
You know California's a desert, Bob, right? You know, everything south of San Luis Obispo is a desert.
How do you know it doesn't come from?
And the reason, the reason nobody lived in Southern California.
Well, okay, I don't care, it doesn't make a difference. At the end of the day, 6.7.
I understand, but the surplus amount is for a change.
But I'm reading, no, it's more than that, it's 2.8, 1.1, 2.2.
So, that's, that's.
6.2.
All right, so.
And then plus half a million from the water.
So, so 6.7 on a $30 million budget. We said 22% of the budget, so that's like 66, 6.6 million. So, we're in a ballpark. I don't disagree.
And this is only going to make you worse.
I don't disagree, well, I don't know about that, I hope, but I don't, I don't.
You know, Bob.
I mean, I really.
You know, I really.
Don't talk about electric rates.
Because people in Antarctica might not turn their air conditioners on, or whatever. Okay. What the hell?
But you know what, we got to be careful, because that's ridiculous, that was ridiculous if compares to California.
Just to me.
It was ridiculous.
All right.
It is that ridiculous, have you? Southern California is a desert. People shouldn't live there.
I tell you, it was great. When I lived there, it was 80 degrees and sunny every day, never raining.
You know, all that parking was, all that land was paved, and there were a lot of people that.
Listen, I'm advising my son to be a water dealer, you know, hydrant. I understand the availability of clean drinking water is the number one issue in the world. But, same time.
You know, all we're asking is make sure that all the information, and then we see the results.
Okay, before you have a, before you have an auditor come in to take a presentation, they need to have all, they need to have all the facts, too.
I got it.
Everyone talking about this, like, they don't know about the, you know, they don't know about the hookup fees, they don't know about all the source of revenue, they have no idea about the projections on increased, the increased methane billing. If you're going to do a study, if you're going to do a study.
You're very welcome, you're well-deserved.
Would you be happy, like, I felt like you asked, would you be happy with this analysis?
I'm going to try. Yeah, I've worked in the city now, but it's. Play butt on the beat.
You want to, two things, taking one out of people's pockets, it's not a hard decision. Look, do it.
Come on.
All right, if we, ready to get back to our seats, so we, I guess we lost, we lost Pat. Okay, a few more minutes. We lost Carmel.
It has to be one or the other. We can't keep doing what we're doing. So, let's see who wants to make a hard decision.
Oh, no, this is a big deal, this is a big. Expand.
Either you have to expand, or shrink.
Put something else on the table.
Jesus, Prince, I heard you say that.
Increase costs.
Damn.
You want to do something over there?
Yeah, that's true.
This is.
No revenue.
Happen.
Oh, you can't see? No more revenue. Not going to work. We can answer to the candidate.
Nope, we've got to be careful, somebody could pick our pockets, take our wallets, you know what I mean?
All right, we are all back here, so we will have the strategic plan, obviously, with the, I know you put together a nice concise presentation for us.
First, thank you for the whole water break, because it was getting cold in here. And thank you for letting us go next, I do appreciate it. We did want to bring this presentation, on my right is Samantha Robinson, she's our health educator, for those who haven't met her yet, and she's going to help me with the presentation. And we're actually very excited that we actually are doing it today, because today is Public Health Thank You Day. And it's also Jonas Salk's birthday, who was the COVID vaccine, so it's a very timely day. On your tables, there are two articles that you can pass to each other. They're basically articles that are talking about the positive return on investment for public health impact on a community. So, I was going to let you guys just read that at your leisure. Pretty cool, I like that stuff, Erica. So, we just wanted to start really briefly, because we have this opportunity, and as health educators, we love taking this opportunity, to talk about what public health is. And it's really, all of those different facets you see behind me. It's looking at the health of the population as a whole, especially as it's monitored and promoted through the state. So, it has our surveillance, monitoring, you know, analysis, looking at outbreaks, health promotion, research, et cetera. Specifically, we're really looking at why do we need public health? So, one of our favorite components is, if you look at the bottom of our green over here, public health really keeps our families safe, so, and we are so effective at what we do, that we don't really think twice. So, basically, public health allows everyone to go out of their house every day. You know, we keep the water clean, we have a lengthy discussion about water, we ensure that our environment is healthy, that you have safe food to eat, that we give knowledge and skills for disaster response, such as our retail food establishment packet we gave out today. We're trying to prevent this spread of dangerous diseases, and inform the community of important health issues. So, why is that really important? I mean, everybody thinks it's pretty important on the basic level, but we're really looking at health status and related health behaviors, personally, organizationally, institutionally, environmentally, and policy-based. And local public health addresses the influences at all of those levels, and in a variety of different environments and settings. So, we're looking at how do we invest in our community? Look at what is affecting our health, and as you can see, let's see if I can figure this out. So, we're looking at our social factors, we're looking at our clinical care, health behaviors, and public health really impacts all of those. How do we do that? Well, again, like we talked about with the water, healthy businesses, our Complete Streets, which was mentioned today, working with those people who are Alice residents, or asset limited income residents, and by making our food healthy, and making our restaurants, number one, it's good for our businesses. How do we bring some of our businesses back? We show them that we are taking care of our communities. So, this is just what we use in our public health practice standards, it's chapter 52, colon, eight, chapter eight, colon, 52, for our practice standards. And this is everything the local public health departments are required to fulfill, and they really encompass the 10 essential services, which you see behind me on the screen. So, specifically, what do we do? What does the Madison Health Department do to meet those practice standards? We provide immunizations for children and adults. Anybody who knows our Nurse Marlene, who's in the audience, is our favorite flu shot lady, but she does much more. We do our child health clinics, we work on our vaccines for children, vaccine for adult, our preventative healthcare for our babies and our preschool children. Include the immunization audits of our schools, to ensure appropriate vaccination status of our children. We do our screenings, as Ben mentioned, today, we're doing two screenings that are coming up in December, we're helping to prevent chronic diseases in our adults. We work on our community alliances. One of the key pieces of the health department now, is really being a part of the whole community in our collaborations. So, not only our municipal alliance, or MASA, we now have our Madison-Chatham Coalition, and we work to support that, as well as sitting on numerous other organizations in the community. Give out information and educational programs, promoting a healthy lifestyle. You look at our website, which, our beautiful new website, that Samantha is now working on, putting even more great stuff up there. We're trying to get the message out, how do we do that? The social media is the number one. Get the data out, the retail food establishment guidelines, we've loaded it up there, and we're asking our restaurants to download it. Monitoring, investigating communicable diseases. Unfortunately, have diseases that were eradicated just 15 years ago, back in our communities, measles, bumps, pertussis, whooping cough. And we're monitoring them on a daily basis, hepatitis A, hepatitis B, hepatitis C. We get those notifications daily, for not only our community, but the surrounding communities, and it's our job to monitor them. Lead is considered disease we have to monitor. We also do our inspections of public health nuisances and environmental health hazards. I guess one of the things, besides retail foods we're famous for, is our rabies and zoonosis control, and we do that on a regular basis as well. And then, we also issue all the vital records in our community. So, this is just an overview of kind of what I talked about. This is some of the services we now provide, based on the practice standards, that's the rest of them. Anything that's in solid green is something we provide fully, and those like in behind, the ones that have the diagonals are partially covered, and anything that is blank with blue is not covered. For example, we really don't do septic installations in Madison. So, one of the questions, thank, yes, one of the questions we had is, looking at the potential, if the Madison Health Department was not the Madison Health Department anymore, what would happen? what would happen? You would still have your practice standards covered, and you would still have, you know, basic services, but there's certain key pieces that would not be covered by the contracts. So, in Chatham Borough, Chatham Township, Springfield, these items here, we do not cover. This is not a part of our contract services, this is specifically Madison. So, if there was not a standalone health department in this community, these are pretty much the, the different agencies who would have to take over what we do now. So, I know Liz is looking at me with clerk and administration, but vital statistics, animal licensing, business licensing, that is all a service that is dedicated to the town and has to stay here. As well as property maintenance, garbage can enforcement, housing standards, and sewer and grease trap interceptors. And, I put a question mark on emergency preparedness, because I'm not sure who would be tasked with shelter management at that point, so.
Burnt to the rest of them.
So, that would, thank you. That was perfect, huh? But that, that, these are just, so, basic on those. Also, I wanted to talk a little bit about what, before we get specific into what our plans are for the future, where our sources of revenue are, and our contract revenue projected out for the next three years are behind me, twenty fifteen and then two years, twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen. That covers our vital statistics, our vital records, our business licensing, our contracts, our nursing services, which does include Medicare reimbursements. Also, we've developed some new programs that are taking off in our nursing services, so that's helped us recognize a little more revenue, we just don't know where it's going yet as we develop it, and our animal licensing, and then general program fees. One of the things that we also have heard in the community at times is, how does, how does it differ? What do you do here, what do you do there? And we'll say, you know, when we look at potentially new contracts, we really have to look at what exactly are we faced with? Here's an example of two towns, Town A and Town B. One town has a population of ten thousand, one has sixteen thousand. Town B, even though it's only six thousand more residents, we're looking at over, two times over the number of public health complaints. Pool inspections in Town A is triple of Town B. Septics, I think you can see that, animal bite investigations, and these are based on twenty fourteen numbers of two of our communities. Temporary food events, one town has no temporary food events, another town, we have to do twenty-eight inspections. So, if one town has seven or eight events, and they have a minimum of five, four to five restaurants there, or temporary vendors that we have to be involved with. Communicable disease investigations, immunization records, that is our number of childhood immunizations, and then the audits. So, one town has eight schools that we have to audit, the other town has nineteen. Our adult vaccines are six times in one community over another. Our health promotion programs, we try to really be more broad-based with, so that looks pretty even, and, as well as our alliances. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Samantha, she's gonna talk a little bit about how we got to our strategic plan. I believe everyone, I, did, did everyone receive our copy of our strategic plan? Not, did everybody, okay, that will be next, you will get that electronically.
That would've been helpful, but.
That would've been helpful, and I apologize.
Be a little prelude to that. So, with all that said, and understanding what public health is and what our essential duties are, we created a strategic plan, which is a three-year plan usually, usually it's three to five, is that better? So, here's the process that we followed, gathering facts, SWOT analysis, which is an internal analysis of your weaknesses and strengths and threats and opportunities, and then that goes all the way down to reviewing and adjusting, and constantly reviewing plan. We evaluated our workforce and created a workforce development plan, which is an actual document that has been reviewed.
You'll extend it?
Yes, we could extend that with, with the strategic plan. And we worked with our stakeholders, which stakeholders are the, the important players in our, in our process, and that was the Board of Health. We conducted staff meetings for our SWOT analysis, so we included our stakeholders. We held trainings on quality improvement, which is the process of creating a strategic plan and reviewing our goals and objectives. We evaluated and developed a accreditation readiness grid, which the health department is working, have a accreditation nationally, which is voluntary, voluntary, but not any, no one in New Jersey has really gotten one yet.
Well, actually, no.
Last week?
As of last week, there is now one town that is accredited. And the state of New Jersey is in the process of completing.
Just one, one thing, Lisa, if you can stay close to the microphone, because you have a good voice, but we can't capture it on the video.
Oh yeah, I'm always, I've never been told I'm too quiet.
So, from our, from our strategic plan, we made our goals and our objectives, and then we created our QI process, which is very important right now, we're doing. So our internal analysis was the first step to our strategic plan, to assess what we are strong in and what we're weak with. It's structured planning method to use evaluate strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats, and, so, our strengths, a couple to point out, our staff is very skilled, committed, adaptable, experienced, level of integrity. We're very team-oriented, we always have monthly staff meetings. We have multi-roles, everybody wears many hats in their roles at the health department. We have lots of partnering groups in the community that we've worked together with for years. And we have strong shelter management and mass distribution experience, like in Sandy with the shelter management, our nurses worked very closely with the town with that, or with the borough, and our distribution, point of view, wine flu if we needed to. Very user-friendly client experiences and that we do once in a while. And, this, this is where our goals and objectives mainly came from. We, we find that there are a lot of services we offer to the borough, to the residents, that are sometimes unmarketed and a lot of people know about. We need a lot of formal documentation help, which is a accreditation process, and we have a lot of due kids efforts, which is a lot of different, the same process for one goal, and we also need to explore more the cost-benefit ratio. Opportunities, we have a lot of healthcare collaboration, we have MOUs with doctors in town to clients that we have. We have Medicare electronic billing that's helping, very strong alliances, Madison. Mental health partners. Sorry, I don't have a very loud voice like Lisa does. Our threats are, we are in a very big transition right now, we've had a couple of staff members retire, and we have a couple of new ones, myself is one of them, and we're trying to reinforce our workforce development. Competing for towns' contracts is one of the other threats right now.
No, just, we, we really did a lot of discussion on this, because the threats are really what's outside affecting us, you know, understanding, you know, what are the reduced need for personal services, I think I've spoken about this before, where we were being put out of business, so to speak, with some of the federal regulations and the Affordable Care Act, and that does impact us, but as we mentioned in our opportunities, we're really working with the Alice population now, as well as other populations that have those gaps in their insurance coverage that we can assist them with. And the other big competition and a threat was, as you'll see, the everyone doing health prevention and the vaccinations now. So, you know, you can stick your arm out a window and go to a drive-by clinic, it won't be Marlene with her smiling personality, but you can put your arm out there and you're done, you know, in this day and age, when everybody wants everything done, quick, 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 you can go to a drive-through clinic now and get a flu shot. So, so there's a lot of different, different components about that, yes.
Can I ask what Board of Health versus Borough is?
Sure. So, part of the threats was, the concept are, we a part of the Borough, or are we strictly an autonomous agent that is, that basically the Borough is contracting with for a higher rate? So, that's a threat, because it, people don't always understand the concept of who we are. So that's what the threat is. So when you do the threat analysis, obviously, you know, you're looking at all the outside issues, and these are some of the comments you got from some of our key stakeholders, some of our, you know, talking with some other people in focus groups, and they say, we don't, where do you belong? You know, we hear that a lot of times. So sometimes, we're considered a department, sometimes, well, you're an autonomous board, so, and that's where also some of that political whims concern comes in.
Can I ask you, how concerned are you about the last one? Because that really is the one that's the biggest issue, because if you go back and look at your budget.
Right.
Not even a hundred thousand dollars is coming from Madison, the three-quarters of your budget's coming from outside of Madison. If those contracts were all taken over by competing towns, counties, what happens to Madison's Health Department?
That's, goes back to the Board of Health versus Borough. So, the issue is, in that situation, one of the threats is, are we a department, like the police department? Or are you going to, and this is gonna come off very argumentative, but devil's advocate, are you going to contract out your police department, and should you lose those contracts, will you say, okay, we don't need a police department? Public health, unfortunately, when we do our job, you don't really think you need us. And that's really the important component of public health, because if we're preventing disease and we're preventing outbreaks, people can easily say, it's kind of, quite honestly, it's very similar to the wells. If the wells are underneath and you're not, and they're not screaming for help, they go unnoticed. It's the same thing with public health. If we're doing our job, you don't think you really need us. So, the question remains, if those contracts are gone, do you want your own health department in the community, or would you like, would you go outside and bring it in? And that's just really the, you know, some, there's towns, you know, all over the state, everybody's different. Not every town is a shared service community, there are standalone health departments. That would be a decision, decision the Borough would have to be made. If the contracts are gone, do we still want a health department here?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So, did you want, okay. So, what we did is through our strategic plan, and again, I apologize, I thought I had sent it ahead of time, and I will get it out to everyone, the electronic version of the strategic plan and the workforce development plan, well, we created our own mission, which is to promote, protect, and assure conditions for optimal health through leadership, partnership, prevention, and response, and our vision is obviously for a healthy, robust, and resilient community. We have four priorities that came out of our strategic plan. It was the restructuring of Madison Health Department based on the transition of retirees, to develop quality improvement, to improve efficiency and cost-effectiveness. We did it, but we really didn't document it, and part of that process is then bringing us to accreditation readiness. Accreditation, national accreditation by the Public Health Accreditation Board is really picking up speed in New Jersey, and that's something that we feel will make us a very marketable health department. But, more importantly than marketable, it's just good public health practice, and that's why we're doing this, and that's why we call it readiness. And then our last priority was emergency preparedness and response. The goals included strengthening our infrastructure by developing a workforce that's able to respond to changing public health trends, enhance the identity of the health department through various forms of communication and branding, which, if you see, we now have our own logo, our Madison Health Department logo, thanks to Samantha, and improve services by increasing our technology capabilities. And actually, I would say, a good chunk of these three goals, we've been really making some progress on in 2015. Part of our strategic plan also is to put in a performance management system, and so we have time-delineated objectives that we're watching to see if we meet, and each member of the team is a captain for different time periods and different goals and objectives. Our second, based on our second priority, we want to look at the staff's basic quality improvement knowledge, develop a culture of quality improvement in our department, and we're going to be pursuing two projects annually. The 2015 projects are the Madison Rabies Clinic and the immunization audit process. We're looking at how we can streamline it, provide better service with the licensing procedures for our residents, and the immunization audit process, we're looking at the amount of time it takes our nursing staff to complete these audits based on the documentation the schools bring to us. Oftentimes, these audits can take ten to twelve hours by multiple visits and having to take multiple documentation. 2016, our projects are to have a full policy and procedures manual for every division in my department, and to update our flu handlers course. For our third priority, we're looking at completing a community health assessment. We've completed the strategic plan, the workforce development plan, and to participate in the Fab Domain and Development activities. We have worked very closely on getting the community health assessment data from the county, but we are looking at utilizing intern staff we actually should be receiving, we're hoping to get an epidemiology student from Rutgers University who will actually do a community-level needs assessment, which is extremely laborious and unintensive. And then our final goal is to continue education and preparation to improve our emergency response and communication, and to work effectively in that process as well. Anything you wanted to add to that? So our QI, I am bringing it home, our QI process, just so you can see, this is very specific to public health performance management, it's continuous actions that lead to our measurable improvement, and it's Plan, Do, Study, Act is really what this is a part of as well. So you plan it, you do it, you study it, you look at what you feel is the best way to do it, you enact on it, and, Plan, Do, Study, Act, yes, we act on it, and then we start all over again, and we then have analyzing it. For example, last, last staff meeting, we are now working on our rabies clinic, we talked about what type of volunteers we need, what we worked, what worked last year based on our notes of our hot wash afterwards, what did we need to change? And so, and then we will be doing another set of customer satisfaction surveys, and we really did listen to what the people said for improvement. So, what are we looking for the future? So we're looking at, if we're, as our business plan, what do we need to do to make ourselves more marketable to other communities, if that's what they choose? One is to supplementing our staff, we just, as Samantha said, we have Samantha that came on board, we have Elizabeth Bringard, who is a consultant through a grant that works with us. We are really looking at, I mentioned last year's budget hearing, we would like to expand to a second health educator, because we're working on our accreditation readiness, but we also find that health promotion would be a positive way to expand our resources, even if we didn't have new contracts, we can expand our services to other communities. There are some communities that are discussing with us, doing multi-jurisdictional sharing, so they have their own health department, but there's services they'd like to share with us. We're looking at grant support, we were invited by the Grotto Fund to make an application for a grant, we are now in the second phase of that grant, which actually will help us a lot, if we do get this grant, the first six months is a community, a set, community-level assessment of senior citizens' needs, wants, services. So, we're hoping that we get this, this would be another chunk or another piece, that the epidemiology student could work for our community-level needs assessment, and then obviously, what's on everyone's mind is potential contracts, and like I said, the staff, the grants, all give us opportunities to expand what we're doing in our long-term business plan. So that's really what we're looking for. Did you want to make any comments in addition?
Everything was getting much on the.
Okay. And one of the other things I did want to mention, when we talk about what is one of the benefits of having a community-level health department, I think it was two weeks ago, we had a person coming in, and they were coming in for their flu shot, and they were speaking with Marlene about, you know, there used to be this, Matt, she might have to tell the story better, but I'm gonna paraphrase, there used to be this. There used to be this fund for Christmas, and I don't know how to access it, and I don't know what to do, right? And Marlene said, oh, I can help you with that. So here's somebody who walked off on the street, didn't need services, didn't need to be connected. So we also become the kind of catch-all sometimes, where people walk in, they can come to the health department because they do recognize our faces. So I think we have a bunch of really great faces. I think we have some amazing staff. And we've had our Board of Health be very supportive in, you know, moving forward in the strategic plan. So if anyone has any other questions, otherwise, I thank you very much.
Questions or comments for Bob?
I just have a comment. I've worked closely with you guys for many years, and I'll just tell two quick stories. A resident from one of your contracting towns approached me one day and said, Don, I wish they were in my town, because, so they would have your availability. But what I'll say is this, you're one of those types of agencies that, when things are good, kind of go unnoticed. But when things are bad and you're not around, people wish they had you. So I know you have challenges. I hope you find ways to address them, and you can reach out to me whenever you need because you're a vital part of this community.
Bob?
So will we, I think we have a hard decision to make as it pertains to the health department. So, and the way I see it, we either expand and, you know, really try to increase, do the amount of other towns we serve, lower the cost, or maybe we have to, you know, the other option would be to go the other way. So will we be discussing this in the budgeting, in the 2016 budget discussions? Or like, what's the timeframe for the decisions we're going to make as it pertains to the health department?
Certainly, some of the items they brought up related to staffing up and all that needs to be discussed as part of the budgeting process. And, you know, we, I think we'll need to understand how, not only the cost of, you know, staffing up, but what's the likelihood of being successful as we're competing with county services?
Yes, I agree. I think it's a hard decision.
Yep.
But that's on the docket for January or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I'll just note that our Board of Health President is sitting in the audience. Donald, thank you for being here, Tom Bowen.
Forgot my president and my strategic plan. So I will make sure, like I said, I will make sure the documents get to everyone.
Thank you. All right, but if we'll take care of Robert's items, and then we'll get to the bylaws and the road reconstruction. So for the very last time, I'd like to call up Robert Califford. We've got items four, five, six, and seven, which I...
First item is the corrective action plan, which is required. There are four recommendations, one is a repeat from last year, which...
There are four recommendations, one of which is a repeat from last year on segregation of duties, three new ones, nothing material. Any questions on any of these?
Nope, okay. That'll be Resolution 313.
The next item is cancellation of 17 ordinances in general water and electric capital funds. We're canceling $84,000 in general capital. When we did the refunding ordinance in 2014, we authorized 17 and a half million in debt, and we issued an amount that was almost 2.9 million less than that. That's called unfunded debt. We still need to cancel that. Does not increase the liquidity, but we need to remove it from the general capital balance sheet. The water capital is going to cancel 9,000, and the electric capital 50,000. And next year, there will be a much more significantly larger amount of ordinances to cancel. There's years from 2013, 14, and 15, that there are many ordinances that are open that should be completed during calendar year 16.
Questions on that?
Not a question, but just a statement. I would ask that in the future, when we do this, we actually get a complete list of all the outstanding ordinances, the amount of money we appropriated, the amount of money that's already been spent, the amount of money that is still available and encumbered, the amount of money that's, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say available and encumbered, the amount that's encumbered, the amount that's just free and available. Because I think it's good practice for us to take a look at our entire portfolio of capital ordinances every year.
Good idea. Jim, you capture that?
All right. Last to a routine, we're just going to cancel six checks, very small items. And then I recommend we cancel two grant receivables and two grant appropriation reserves. The one grant is for $10,105. It's from 2006, New Jersey Department of Health and Senior Services grant. I discussed this with Lisa. She said to cancel it. There's an old bulletproof vest partnership grant, all the way back from 2011. I discussed that with Chief Dachshund. Said to cancel it.
Resolution 316. Any other questions or Robert? Thank you. Bob said it well earlier. Thank you for your leadership and stewardship over the years, and celebration to come.
Thank you all.
December 11th.
Okay, right. Good night.
Good night.
Good night, Robert.
Good night, Grace.
Bylaws. Armella?
Okay. This is going to be easy. You know, at the joint meeting last week, one of my suggestions was that these bylaws have been going back and forth for, you know, a few months, and it was getting a little bit confusing because we were getting, actually getting different bylaws from all kinds of directions. One of the things that Liz put in is the bylaws as they're stand, as they are right now, last revised 11/14/2015. But I also put, we also made you copies so that you could see where the changes were made. Unfortunately, we don't have a color copier here in the building, so you can't really see it. So they do start on page two, and they're relatively minor. The purpose of looking at these tonight is, if you have any questions, we'd like to, at the next meeting in December at the joint, is to actually pass the bylaws so that they're ready for the reorg down there. So, I mean, if you could take a look at, underneath, I think it's regular meetings, section three, it's held at 7:30 PM. I don't know why that was never in them. And there's a special meeting that is called by the chair and the vice chair, the joint meeting in writing. I think, Austria and I were talking about, I think the biggest change actually is, is that the finance chair is also, the personnel will also be taking over that particular So that was my purpose of bringing them, because I just think that we've had too many conversations. Chatham Borough agreed to do it. They didn't have a quorum last meeting. So they're bringing this to their December meeting. And I just want to get it out there so that when we, I think our meeting is like December 10th or whatever, isn't it?
21st.
The 21st, yeah. So we'll have a meeting here in December prior to, and so will Chatham. And then the last joint meeting will be December 21st when we vote on this. So that is the purpose.
So any...
Any questions or whatever?
Questions or comments? My mother would say, speak now, forever hold your peace. But speak sometime over the next two weeks and forever hold your peace. And I guess the other, just not a major change, but there is always a confusion, what's the difference between the quarterly meeting and the operation, finance and operating? So we have put it all together. So every meeting is a regular meeting, which will be run by the mayor of either town, depending on the year, or their backups. Thank you.
Thank you.
2016 road reconstruction. Bob Vogel's still here.
He fell asleep.
The agenda item was put on by Jim, and it's been our practice, or at least our mode of thinking over the past couple of years, to try to get the temporary budget squared up on capital so that we can bid and award time-critical road reconstruction programs early in the spring rather than later in the year. So the proposal for this year's approaching capital budget was attached in your packets, and Jim and I and Ray have gone through that several times, I believe Pat's had a look at it as well. So if there's any questions about the number of road reconstruction projects we have on for 2016, and that dollar amount which we'd like to have in the preliminary capital budget for January, please feel free.
Pat? So I don't have any questions, because obviously, we've been talking about this at length for a while. So two things. One, this is something where we pushed for this year because, one of the things I learned the past year is that these projects tend to take quite a bit of time to get lined up. And if we don't start early, we find ourselves doing road reconstruction in October, which is not ideal. So the idea was really that by the beginning of this year, Bob would have everything queued up and ready to go so that the council could approve it as early as possible, we could get the bids out, get the best possible responses from people who are still hungry for work, not the tail end, and people were still available, and possibly get the work done in the springtime rather than the fall. The one issue that I have had a concern about is, well, there's two. One is the overall scope of the work that I've seen so far that's being proposed, not just for roads, but for some of the other areas, is substantially higher than it was proposed to be just a year ago when we did the 2015 sort of three- or five-year look ahead. So one of the concerns I've had, and I've given to Jim, is I really need to understand where is this extra money coming from to pay for this? I mean, we're talking about an average of $700,000 a year for the next three years between all the different capital areas. The second is, and it's actually more important, is when you look at the strategic plan that we got from Bruce Galton's group, the capital budget group, I looked at it from the perspective of, how are they really allocate, how do they think the funds that we're applying to capital should be allocated over the years? And I came up with some sort of five-year look estimates, and also an overall percentage. And the thing I'm concerned about is that we are extremely over allocating resources to roads compared to water, sanitary sewer, storm sewer. And so I really, in discussing this with Bob, it's going to be a challenge this year to kind of bring him into line, but I'm really looking for Bob and company, especially once we have the final numbers coming from the consultants, to get us closer to allocating the dollars towards our capital budget, big bucket areas, in the way that we really said they should be based on what we thought we should be spending over a 40-year period of time on an annual basis for capital. Because it's very easy to do roads, because it's the one thing that everyone comes in here and complains about, and it's very visible. However, as we discussed earlier tonight, things like water sits underground, it's, that and our sewer systems are two oldest systems we have in this town. They're, I think, well over 100 years old at this point. And it's critical that we make sure that we keep a focus in terms of the money we're applying towards working on them year after year. So that's one of my goals as we look at the 2016 capital budget and the next five years, that we're doing a better job of lining up what we're planning to spend with what the capital budget group gave us in terms of recommendations.
Good points there. Any other thoughts or? All right. Thank you.
Can I just make one comment before you go? We had a brief conversation. I don't think anybody ever said thank you for Ridge Dale Avenue. So I'd like to say thank you for Ridge Dale Avenue. Because it's a blessing, you know, I could go home without hitting every pothole in Madison.
You know, one of the things as far as scheduling is concerned that became a challenge with Ridge Dale is the fact that state assistance was included, two rounds, two years, two separate years. And so...
But it certainly is good. It's certainly good.
I wish we could have got launched May 1st, but because of the state involvement, it was delayed a little bit.
Yeah. Thank you.
Rob?
One question. We have a lot of balls in the air. Do you have enough, I mean, are we, I mean, it seems to be, there's going to need, there's going to need to be a lot of administration of the projects that we're planning to do in '16. How are you set for that?
Well, for roads, obviously...
In general, I mean, roads are one part of it, but there's a lot of other stuff on your plate.
It's important, from my perspective, to be able to get the number of projects in from Open Space Trust, from the general capital, from the electric department, from the water department, all those that are definitely coming my way. It's easier for me to handle if I know earlier rather than later. And so I would say that, you know, for roads, for the most part, Dennis has been a huge help in terms of an outside hired service to us. Amendment engineering is obviously available to us. But yeah, no, I mean, for juggling a fair amount of projects in-house that an outside hired service has not been assigned to, then yeah, it becomes a challenge for one person, absolutely. So I don't know the answer to that until January rolls around, but I'll keep it in mind, and I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Move on to ordinances for hearing. Clerk, please read the statement.
Ordinance 52, 2015, 53, and 54 were scheduled for hearing. Were introduced by title and passed on first reading in the council meeting of October the 14th, 2015. All were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
I call it ordinances for second reading. I ask the clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 52, 2015, ordinance amending chapter 34 of the Code of the Borough of Madison entitled the Police Department, establishing promotion procedures for the rank of police chief, captain, lieutenant, and sergeant, and establishing a procedure for acting appointments and hiring officers.
I open the hearing for ordinance 52. Anyone wishing to be heard, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 52-2015.
Second.
Council discussion. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 52, 2015, adopted and finally passed, and I ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 53, 2015, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $30,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a digital fingerprinting system for the police department.
I open the hearing for ordinance 53. Anyone wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 53-2015.
Second.
Council discussion. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 53, 2015, adopted and finally passed, and I ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 54, 2015, ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending chapter 166 of the Borough Code entitled Streets and Sidewalks Regarding Road Openings and Excavations.
I open the hearing for ordinance 54. Anyone wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance 54-2015.
I second.
Council discussion. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 54-2015, adopted and finally passed, and I ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And now we're on to our second of two invitations for discussion. This is one, Republicans, speak on any topic. Again, keep your comments to three minutes or less. State your name and your address, and even if you've been here before, like an hour ago.
Two.
For two.
For two.
I'll try to keep it under one minute. Just a couple of things. I wanted to really recognize Ray Cody, not only for what's already been said, but the great work he's done for the years I've known him here. I also wanted to compliment the Borough of Madison. I thought it was very nice to be recognized as one of the top small towns in America. That was very nice, and I think we should make something out of that. That was very nice, and I think we should make something out of that. They have some wrong data behind it. As I looked through it, it was interesting, but we got it anyway.
Well, yeah, we would have been, we would have been even better with the right data.
Quickly, on the website, at my last meeting, I said I'll look at it, and it looked very nice. Right now, the comments I would make is that we should have more exposure to the nonprofits in town. We have over 100 nonprofits in Madison. We should make it easy for people to know about them and get to them. And the other side of the equation, we should have more exposure to the Chamber of Commerce and the 1,281 businesses we have in town. So that's a kind of stuff I'll just go over quickly. And then, Bob, when you gave your report on the hit and run, it reminded something from the past. We have had a lot of issues in that stretch, from Honda going out to Division. It's been problem all the time. People try to walk across the road. There are no stop signs, there are no crosswalks, and people are trying to run across the road. So I don't know what you can do, you know, do a study, do make some changes, but it's been a problem for some time. It's amazing we haven't had more hit runs like that.
But isn't this the case with this one, where the driver was actually driving down the shoulder of the road?
That's what reports, yeah. I think we can certainly, certainly take this back to complete streets, as Chatham has, you know, you know, that one intersection, they've got the flashing lights for the commuters that are walking that discuss that.
We actually, I did go around with Chad Ripka, who's, you know, in charge of traffic and safety. And we're constrained somewhat by state, because it's a state road, but we can't, we can't put a crosswalk probably right in that area, because it's far enough away from the two lights and the distance. So I'll follow up, or Bob can follow up with that.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we're on to introduction of ordinances. Can the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinance scheduled for first reading has a hearing date set for December the 14th, 2015. It will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinance 56-2015 for first reading, and ask the Borough Clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $35,000 from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund for an automated meter pilot program.
Mayor, I move ordinance 56-2015.
I move, I'm sorry, I second that motion.
Any discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions. May the clerk please read the statement.
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move R. 307 through R. 326.
I second.
Mr. Mayor, I'd ask that R. 318 be pulled for separate discussion.
Okay. Any others? Any discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I have a motion for Resolution 318, 2015.
I move?
Second.
Discussion.
This is about giving across-the-board increases to our management staff of about 2%. And a year ago, when we had the same issue, we had a discussion in the executive. At the time, I expressed my concern about the fact that I didn't think it was fair for people who were doing a better job. And really, it was anti-incentivizing to consistently give the same increases to everybody. At the time, though, because it was for the previous year before I served on the council, I abstained from voting on the issue. But I was relatively clear that I felt that, coming into this year, we should have a more merit-based program, and I thought that was something we were going to do. And I also made it clear that if we didn't, I would be voting against that type of package. I believe, number one, that our employees do deserve good salaries, reasonable increases, but I think there should be some distinguishing between our staff. And I think just applying a universal increase is not, is not correct for either our staff or for our taxpayers. So I'll be voting against this tonight.
And so the public knows that this resolution does talk about implementing a system for the coming year. Ben?
Yeah, I just wanted to emphasize that. I don't know that last year, though, we indicated an interest and in various ways expressed a feeling that there ought to be some kind of merit process. We're not, we weren't nearly as explicit as we are in this resolution, and so I'll be voting yes.
Any other comments? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
No.
There's no unfinished business. Approval of vouchers.
Public safety, $24,950.67. Health and public assistance, $5,005.73. Public Works and Engineering, $193,273.44. Community Affairs, $7,370.64. Finance and Borough Clerk, $6,185,479.12. Utilities, $746,959.38. Total is $7,163,038.98.
I move the vouchers?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
All right, new business. It took a while to find someone that could replace John Hoover on these two committees,